Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Wednesday, January 8th, 2025. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge Allegiance in a silent prayer. I ask that you keep in your prayers tonight. We've lost a few members of our community since the last meeting. Obviously, President Jimmy Carter passed away. Darius Butler was the recreational leader at the North End Rec for over thirty years. And I believe last night we lost Bonnie Orentis, who was the Chair of the Litter Control and Beautification Committee for over twenty-five years. So please keep them all in your prayers.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal and free justice for all.
Here.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy.
Present.
Alderman Nugan.
Present.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Taladine.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Okay, and Alderman Rinaldi is out of state. At the moment, he had made plans that were, the meeting was changed, so we ended up having a meeting on his planned trip out of state. So with that, the next order of business would be public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit. Please state your name and address for the record. Like I said, you'll have a five-minute time limit. I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 1400 Meriden Road, Martin Spring.
I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year first. Martin Spring, 1400 Meriden Road. Tonight is very bone-chilling night. And, you know, I was just hoping and praying that we got to start looking for elderly and taking care of them, especially our senior citizens, and also our veterans who may be out and about and being homeless. I think this is something we should really focus in on. I want to thank the administration and the mayor for having warm incentives and your members of the Board of Aldermen. I think that's great. I don't think anybody should be outside at night tonight like it is, especially if you've got children and walking around in the streets. So we should keep that in mind for the new year, and hopefully it's going to be a better new year for each and every one of us. And by the way, I want to also wish everybody the best of luck who's going to the president-elect Trump's inauguration. And that's going to be coming up in another week or so. I want to wish everybody the best of luck and Godspeed, and hopefully things are going to work out for each and every one of us. Irregardless of how you feel about the new administration coming in, you know, be a Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter. I think we as Americans should all come together for the betterment of this country. And keep that in mind. And I think that's something very important that we should elaborate with a lot of emphasis on. I know this administration here is willing to work with everybody, and I commend him for that. And I know I most certainly am, even being the Commissioner, even being on the Republican Town Committee. I'm not speaking for nobody on the Town Committee. I'm only speaking for myself. But I'm looking forward to being involved with many, many different aspects within the new administration. That's what I wanted to say. And also, on your agenda over here, you have Robert E. Williams, who submitted a letter of resignation from the Waterbury Human Rights Commission. As you know, I was on the Waterbury Human Rights Commission for at least fifteen, sixteen years. I was past Chairman. And, you know, so I'm hoping that we can get some new people to get involved in, you know, in our system here in the city of Waterbury, if you will, especially for Commissioners and stuff like that. As I was talking to Mr. Mike LeBlanc earlier, I was really hoping that we can get more people to come to the Board of Aldermen meetings. I'd like to see that. That would be my New Year's resolution. I'm sure many of you agree with me, to have more people involved, and citizens are getting involved and coming to the meetings. I had another thing that I did want to say before I mentioned this. I don't really have a lot of time, but I knew Bonnie Orentis, God rest her soul. I knew Bonnie. Bonnie was on my show many times as a host. And Karen and I would go inside a control booth, my wife, and we would run the control booth. And Bonnie would come on with many guests. And Rod Pietro was one of them, and a gentleman by the name of Mike. He's on the Litter Blight Commission. And I know, because I did work at Sears for at least seventeen, eighteen years, automotive as a mechanic. And I remember Bonnie would always tell me about, we're going to meet at the Sears parking lot, and we're going to start collecting items and everything, going out and collecting trash. And I'll tell you, Bonnie was a stand-up lady. She was a beautiful human being. You know, she helped us out so many times. And not only that, she stepped up at the plate for my show in Noggetuck Valley Viewpoints. I've been on that show probably at least twenty years. And after COVID, we shut down. The studio obviously shut down. And I don't tape anymore on Sundays, because there was always a taped show. And it would probably air on Thursday nights. I believe that's when it was. But again, you know, keep Bonnie and her family in her prayers, because she did a bang-up job around Waterbury. She was a wonderful human being. And I'm so sad that she passed at the young age of eighty years old. And, you know, I just want to let you guys know that she was a very good friend of mine. I knew Bonnie for many years. And so I could say nothing else but good things about her. She would never have a bad word to say about anybody. She had anything to say, she'd tell you to your face. She said, Martin, I'm a teacher. I dealt with a lot of kids. So, you know, let's keep that in mind. She was a wonderful human being. And so I'm going to leave it at that. I have more things to say about that. But another thing on the Social Security.
One minute.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Social Security Fairness Act, recently signed into by President Biden. My opinion, if folks are paying into Social Security, irregardless of their current status as public employees, if in fact they have been paying into Social Security through payroll, taxes, or other means, yes, then they deserve to receive some form of compensation from the federal government. This is from federal government, not state now. Remember that, okay? My great concern is, can we afford it by setting a new precedent and burden on the future payments which may lead us into more debt? And I've read an article that if we don't start moving with some kind of movement on Social Security, Social Security is going to go broke in about fifteen years.
That's time. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Next speaker is Ronald Napoli, Sr., 70, Trumpet Brook Road.
Ron Napoli, 70, Trumpet Brook Road. Mr. President, Honorable Members of the Board of Aldermen, Mayor Pernaruski, I'd like to begin by wishing you all a very Happy New Year and express my most sincere appreciation for the job you do in managing the affairs of our city. I think you have all, working with the administration, have made Waterbury one of the most livable big cities in Connecticut. And I thank you for your efforts. I'm here tonight in my capacity as Vice President of the Bunker Hill Neighborhood Association. Last month, we submitted a resolution to the Board of Aldermen asking for some safety improvements to Bunker Hill Park. As I'm sure you are aware, we had a shooting in Bunker Hill Park over the summer. We believe our neighborhood is basically a safe neighborhood. But we do feel some changes could be made to make it even a little bit safer and give people a sense of security when they enjoy our beautiful park. One of the things that we had asked for was two of the blue emergency lights and a uniform closing time for all the parks in the city. The second request probably was not well thought out by us. We understand that parks have to close at different times, given some have lights and have baseball games to go late into the night, and others don't have that kind of a facility. So I think that part of our resolution probably needs a little bit more thinking and perhaps some working on, on your part, to adjust the ordinance so that you could place signs announcing the hours that the park is open. But getting back to the blue emergency lights, we think this is not an unreasonable request. You know, we have a walking track that circumnavigates the park. And in the back, it's a little desolate, you know, and people walk all hours of the day. And, you know, we want people to feel safe. And, you know, we were shaken, you know, by the shooting. And I think, I might be mistaken, but the suspect has not yet been apprehended. I understand he's fled the state, but I'm sure that our excellent police department will catch up with him at some point. But I would like you to reconsider your receiving and placing on file of our original request for the two blue lights. Again, we work hard, and we partner with the city on quite a few issues to keep our neighborhood beautiful and safe. We think it's not a big ask. We understand that it represents a cost. And I don't think you have to think this means that you have to put one in every single park in the city. If other people make a request, other organizations, I would imagine that you would consider it based on the merits of the request. You know, has something happened there that necessitates this kind of a move to improve safety? We believe something has happened, you know, in Bunker Hill, and we want our people to continue to enjoy the park. And again, I would request respectfully that you reconsider your previous action of receiving our request and placing it on file, and look further into the possibility of giving us those two blue emergency stations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Next speaker from 178 Cook Street, Emma Taylor.
Emma Taylor, 178 Cook Street. Good evening, and Happy New Year to everyone. Glad God saw fit for us to all make it to a new year. The topics that I have tonight are a couple. One is Bishop Street. At the top of Bishop Street, when you get up to the top by Fulton Park entrance on the Bishop Street side, there are a couple of cars that park right on the corner of the street. They park right on the corner of Bishop and right on the corner of Pine. And when the school bus comes up, and it's a bad day, slippery, the snow, when they go to make a turn, and also, I forgot, on the west side of the Pine Street, when they go to make that turn, it's very hard for the bus driver to make the turn. They have to do backing up and pulling forward and backing up so that they can make their way around. They do it. But I think there should be something about no parking right on the corner of Bishop and right on the corner of Bishop and Pine on that corner. My next point, and we've been talking about this for a few years now, I made mention to Alderman Salvio, Cook Street, and Buckingham. I think we, in my opinion, Buckingham Street should be one-way going the opposite way of coming down into Cook Street. I live right there where I can look right out my living room window. And when it snowed the other day, it was an ice skating rink. And the people still proceed to try to come down Buckingham, and they know they can't, but they come down anyhow. And they just kind of like just slide right out into the middle of Cook Street. So if they could do a study and maybe think about changing that. And then the other thing, it's like what we talked about on the corner of Cook and Buckingham. They park on the corner right there, too. So it's tough coming out of Buckingham, taking a right-hand turn, going down Cook. So when you turn, you're on the opposite side of the street. So those are my two little issues tonight. I'm sure I'll think of something else before the year is over. But God bless you all, and thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, December 9th, 2024, special meeting of the Board of Aldermen in the Monday, December 16th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. The minutes is read.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Mayor, any, like to address any?
Thank you. Just briefly, and I know Mr. Napoli was here this evening. We spent part of our morning together. Let me start by wishing you all a very Happy New Year. It's nice to have you all back in 2025. Congratulate our President, Mr. DiGiovan Carlo, who got sworn in for another term as a State Rep today. And I spent part of the morning with Mr. Napoli, because his son Ronnie, our former colleague, was sworn in today up at the Capitol for opening days. Alderman Rodriguez was there as well. So I do just want to address for a moment the issues with Bunker Hill Park. I know there have been some concerns expressed by the Neighborhood Association. I know they did submit a resolution a week ago. In the closing times, I appreciate the acknowledgement of the fact that different parks have different needs and requirements that are going to have to be met. But I do want to just address for a moment the blue light stands that I know seem like a great idea. The reality is, though, we've looked at those and looked into them, because we do take these concerns seriously. In the first instance, I want to go on record as saying that Bunker Hill is a very safe park. There are no incidents. The shooting over the summer was a one-off. It was a dispute between two people who knew each other. You know, it's tragic that it happened, but it's not something that's happening regularly in those parks. We have young people playing basketball there regularly. We have young people playing soccer and baseball there all the time, and using the boundless playground there all the time. We don't have all of these incidents. But we did take a look at and have conversations with the police department about these towers with the blue lights. And the reality is that in 2024, 2025, we don't get any meaningful calls to the police department over those things. There's just the calls that come in tend to be people push the buttons and they walk away. The police have to respond because the call has come through, and there's really nothing that's going on with them. So I don't think they're going to add that element of safety that people feel. The reality is, these days, everyone carries a cell phone. And the reality is, the day that the shooting occurred in the park, people did call on their cell phone. The police responded relatively quickly and got there. The other thing you should be aware of is, we are in the process of putting in restrooms into that park, permanent restrooms. There will be cameras that will be hooked up as part of those restrooms. They will be part of the police surveillance system, hooked right into the real-time crime center, which will be far more effective at understanding what's going on in that park and making the responses better. So I don't want it to seem like nobody listened to the issues or took them under consideration. But the reality is, we've looked at it and made some decisions about what makes the most sense. And I would say to you, I think it makes the most sense to continue with what we're doing and not to add that other piece to it. I don't think there's going to be any real benefit from it in the long run. So with that, I hope you have a really good New Year, all of you and your families. And I look forward to a terrific 2025, working together. Thank you.
Okay, a couple things to do before we recess into committees. In front of you are the new charters for the City of Waterbury. Each of you should have one on your desk. So you do have it in your possession now, the Charter of the City of Waterbury, going forward. And then item number 18, we're going to walk it on. This would be the appointment of Angela R. Giuliani as Corporation Counsel, City of Waterbury. It'll be added to our agenda. It'll be added as a receiving place on file. And with that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item 18 to our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Item 18 is added to the agenda. And with that, we will recess into committees. We will start with Finance.
Happy New Year, everyone. I called the Finance Committee to order. Item number one, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following canceled permits as submitted by Frank Baker, Acting Building Inspector, official, Department of Inspection. Tesla Energy Electrical Permit, $427.50. Trinity Solar Electric Permit, $562.50. Trinity Solar Electrical Permit, $1,282.50. And ELC Energy Solutions Roofing Permit, $7,065. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. The refunds is read.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number two, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following canceled permits as submitted by Frank Baker, Acting Building Official, Department of Inspection. Sun Run Installation Services, Inc., $2,205. Sun Run Installation Services, Inc., $5,445. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. The refunds is read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Okay, therefore, the motion passes. Under the Standing Committee, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,394.1. As submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. The refunds is read.
And second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Is there any abstentions? Therefore, the motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Any abstentions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay. I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, starting with item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Lead Hazard Reduction Grant Program, City of Waterbury Lead and Healthy Homes Program, as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN, MSN, MPH, Director of Public Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number five, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends the Board of Aldermen approve and of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Tie &amp; Bond, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
How you doing? Just, and this is probably going to be for all the ones that we have here. Got a couple questions with this. Is now, do we have a rate that we're paying this engineers, a pay rate, or is it dependent on the job they'll charge us for that project?
Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW Engineering. When we did the RFQ, each firm submitted a standard rate. We had a standard form, and they filled in what position they have at what rate. Under this contract, when the projects come up, they will be handled by individual task orders. At that point, the firm will send a proposal, and they have to use the rates that were approved in this agreement. They're attached at the end with the attachment A items. And what we negotiate is how many hours. They're going to say, I need X amount of hours. We'll say, no, you don't, you don't need X minus whatever. And that's how we will handle adjusting the price. But all the firms have submitted rates in for the next three, for these three years. Those are the rates they have to use.
So each for each company put a different rate for different jobs that we are...
They submitted different rates. Each firm set their own rate for different positions. In your section, I think it's 1.2, there's a list of disciplines that the firms were deemed qualified to perform. So they, one, they would check off boxes. We're going to do this discipline, this discipline. And they also submitted rates for, like, senior engineer. And that same rate would be for, regardless of what the project is.
Okay. Now, we have our own engineers from the city?
Yes.
What is this different from what they do, from our engineers?
This is for jobs that are, where we don't have the staffing to perform, or when we get a grant, we need to hire an outside firm, we will use these firms.
Okay.
And our engineers will be supervising, coordinating with the engineers that we hire. But the outside firms will do the design or inspection, different professions, different levels of responsibility.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and VN Engineers, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number seven, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Salamon and Associates, PC, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Civil One, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number nine, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and HRP Associates, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, GPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 10, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Friar Architecture, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Environmental Partners, CT, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12, which I should say was approved at the Board of Education meeting on December 19th, 2024. Item number 12, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a grant agreement with Ready CT for funding for the First Robotics Program at no cost for registration, equipment, supplies, and transportation for rookie teams as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 14, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen not disapprove of the appointment of the following individual to the Environmental Control Commission, as submitted by Paul K. Peranuski, Jr., Mayor, City of Waterbury. Unrestricted appointment of Varsha Jawar from 1/1/24 to 12/31/27. Can I get a motion to not disapprove?
Motion to not disapprove.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say, I've known Varsha for several years. I think she's an excellent addition to the Environmental Control Commission, and I'm excited to see her join the City of Waterbury. Hearing no other further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 15, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Delinquent Collection Services Contract for Tax Serve Capital Services, LLC, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance, and Frank Caruso, Jr., Revenue Collection Manager. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 16 is to set a public hearing. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen set a public hearing on 1/21/25 at 5:45 PM in these chambers for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to a real estate purchase and sale agreement to sell 24-30 Bank Street to M4 Investment Group, LLC, at a purchase price of $585,000, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing?
Motion to set the public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on setting the public hearing? Alderman Zimmerman?
It's not so much to set the hearing. I thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Chairman. It's not so much to set the public hearing, but my question is around the plan that we had to move, like, we were going to move people from the Chiefs Building while we renovated the Chiefs Building to One Exchange. Do we have anyone who can tell us different plans of kind of what we're going to do?
If you recall, so you have the, what is really the One Exchange Building, which is the sixth-floor building that was the office space. And then the seventh unit within that condo association at the time was the standalone building where the restaurant is, and some shops were downstairs. That's really called Exchange Plaza is that building. It's a slightly different address, but it was part of the ownership structure. So when the city took title to it, one of the goals, in addition to what you've described as using the larger office building as swing space, was to resolve this ownership issue so that the units, the whole building was owned by one entity. That standalone building is not necessary for the swing space. It's got a whole different dynamic to it. So our goal now is to get it back into private hands, get it rehabbed, get it back on the tax rolls. And the developer is proposing something like 39 units on the, I'm sorry, 19, I think, units on the top floor that are one-bedroom, five units that are no-bedroom units up there, plus a restaurant and some other retail and commercial space on the first floor. So that's what it'll be used for. But it doesn't affect the plans to use the other building as swing space because this is the standalone building.
So we still have the plaza, and that's why the amount of...
This building is the, so when you, you know, you look at the tall office building, then there's the plaza on the side of it. Then there was the building where Seven Villages is, and there was a barber shop and some other things that are now vacant in there. That's what, we're selling that building is what part of this transaction.
Okay. And then this developer's been doing a lot of work downtown, and I've taken tours of what he's done, and they're amazing.
Yes.
One of his comments was an interest in like a tax abatement phasing because he wanted to collaborate with other developers on different buildings downtown. Did he talk to our team about that at all?
We have conversations as they come in with, you know, proposals for tax abatements or other things. If they bring them up, we would definitely have those conversations.
Okay.
And I agree with you that the work, it's Kurt Mariolis, it's an LLC, but that's the driving force, has done terrific work in downtown. He's really, you know, helping to transform it. So, and this fits right in with what we've been planning to do down there. The residential, the commercial, the restaurant, it's all part of it. It'll dress that whole area up, and it's going to be, you know, a huge change down there. So.
It's exciting to see. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion to set the public hearing? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The public hearing is set for 1/21/25. Can I have a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
Great. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're just going to go right back to the Finance Committee, just to address one item on item number one. Alderman Salvio?
Yes, I call the Finance Committee to order. Under item number one, I read over, did not read the, one of the permits, so we're going to do that now. Trinity Solar Electrical Permit for $1,305. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? I apologize. Thank you very much. We call for an adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Second. Okay, we are adjourned.
Okay, with that, we will return to the regular order of business. Follow-on items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to approve. Item number two is on consent to approve. Item number three is a receiving place on file. Items four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 are on consent to approve. Item 13 is received and placed on file. Item 14 is on consent to not disapprove. Item number 15 is on consent to approve. Item 16 is on consent for a public hearing to be set for January 21st, 2025 at 5:45 in these chambers. And item 17 is received and placed on file, and item 18 is received and placed on file. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing, the Chair will recognize Alderman Michael Salvio, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,394.1, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve the refunds is read.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the refunds are approved. With that, that is our business for the evening. Is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Zimmerman?
I just have a question. Who is our Alderman liaison for the parks? Is that Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Is that you? So I was in the conversations at the Bunker Hill Neighborhood Association, and we did take into consideration, Mr. Gary had said that it might be expensive and not efficient to have the blue lights. But there is a corner that's very dark, and I think that's over where we're putting the bathrooms, kind of. So can we bring to the board just the requests that when they're designing, maybe they can like shine a light in that area?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other? Oh, Mayor.
Because you know that corner. It's like that weird...
My point about Bunker Hill Park, and it's something to keep in mind as you look at these designs, because of the houses in the back of the rest, that park was intentionally built without any lighting in it because it naturally would cause people to end when it starts getting dark. So if you have lights that stay on all night, you're likely to start attracting people back in there. So you have to think it through. But there was an intentional design for that park not to have any lights so that it didn't go on into the night with basketball playing and other things. So if you want to light up a corner, you're just changing the dynamics of it. You may actually invite more problems than you're trying to solve by doing that.
Okay.
I just want to make it...
Yeah, no, thank you. But that's the issue that this residents are bringing up, is this one specific corner. So I'm just trying to clear... What's that?
[inaudible]
I know. We want the sign up on the fence. All right, thank you.
That is true.
Anything further for the good of the order? Hearing none. Alderman Dorso. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Salvio?
Mr. President, I just wanted to reiterate something that you had mentioned. I just want to let everybody know that Bonnie Arrentis, who was former chairperson of the Litter Control and Beautification Committee, was an outstanding human being for those of you who may not have known her. For, as the President said, over 25 years, she has served and was dedicated to the City of Waterbury in keeping it clean and trash-free. And you, as you travel through the city, you must have noticed the flowers and the trash bins that are being brought in because she was a stickler on that one. And this went on for many, many years. We will miss her. She has been my mentor, and I will always honor her memory by continuing her legacy. And I hope that all of us in the City of Waterbury will do the same. God bless Bonnie Arrentis, and may she rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman Salvio. Anything else? Alderman Dorso?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, and we are adjourned.